Okay, we're gonna get started. We can go on the record when you're ready. Okay. Good evening, everyone. This is the public input hearing scheduled in connection with the pending rate filing of PPL Electric Utilities Corporation. My name is Christopher Pell. I'm an administrative law judge with the Pennsylvania Public Utility Commission that has been assigned to hear this case and produce a recommendation for the commission to consider. With me is administrative law judge Barbara Shady-Noss, the other administrative law judge assigned by the commission to this case. With us here are several representatives on behalf of the active parties. There is also a court reporter here who is taking down what is being said and who will produce a written transcript of this hearing. I will briefly explain the nature of this proceeding and allow these representatives to briefly introduce themselves to you, and then we'll hear from you. The commission suspended the effective date of the proposed rate increase until July 1, 2026, and directed that this investigation be undertaken. In general rate cases such as this one, the commission is required by the Public Utility Code to ensure that the rates it approves are just and reasonable. There are many factors which are evaluated in determining whether the proposed rates are just and reasonable. Among them are the efficiency, effectiveness, and adequacy of the utility service, the legitimate needs of the utility for revenue to provide both current levels of service and to improve future service, and the prevention of inequitable rate discrimination among customers or customer classes. Active parties in this investigation, in addition to the company, are the commission's Bureau of Investigation and Enforcement, or INE, the Office of Consumer Advocate, or OCA, the Office of Small Business Advocate, or OSBA, the Commission on Economic Opportunity, or CEO, the Coalition for Affordable Utility Services and Energy Efficiency in Pennsylvania, or CAWSPA, the Customer Generator Coalition, or CGC, the Coalition for Community Solar Access and the Solar Energy Industries Association, or the Joint Solar Advocates, the Energy Justice Advocates, or EJA, Dimension PA 1 LLC, the Environmental Defense Fund, the Natural Resources Defense Council, and Pennsylvania Future, or collectively the Environmental Petitioners, the Retail Energy Supply Association, or RESA, Walmart, PPNL Industrial Customer Alliance, or PAPLICA, the Professional Dairy Managers of PA, or PDMP, the Sustainable Energy Fund, or the SEF, Convergence Energy and Power LP, or Convergent, the Department of Defense, or the DOD, IGS Solar, and Eric Epstein. Some of these parties are here tonight and will have a chance to make some brief introductory remarks. So let's briefly outline what has happened in this case so far and what the schedule is for the future. A pre-hearing conference was held on November 5, 2025. The active parties worked out a schedule and we addressed various procedural issues. If the parties are unable to agree on a settlement, the hearings will be held in Harrisburg on February 17, 2026 through February 20, 2026, so that the active party witnesses who presented written testimony will testify under oath and be subject to cross-examination. These hearings are open to the public, and you are welcome to come and observe. Because hearings are sometimes canceled or changed, you should contact our legal assistants, Pamela McNeil at (215) 560-4228, or Eric Ball at (215) 560-1300 the day before you plan to attend, to ensure that the hearing will be held as scheduled. When the hearings have been completed, the parties will prepare and submit to us written briefs describing the facts as they see them and the law that they believe should be applied to those facts. Main briefs and responsive reply briefs are due on March 10, 2026, and March 20, 2026, respectively, and our recommended decision will be issued in April, 2026. The commission will then decide if our recommendation concerning the proposed rates should be adopted, rejected, or modified. A significant step in the hearing process is the public input hearing. The purpose of this hearing is to obtain the testimony of you, the people who will be directly affected by the proposed rates. So let's talk about how this will be conducted today. There are two ways you can testify. First, you may testify formally. This means that we will swear or affirm you in. The court reporter will record and transcribe your statement, and you will be subject to cross-examination by any of the active parties that are here. We may also ask you some questions. To the extent that your testimony is relevant, material, and competent, it may be considered by us and by the commission. If you choose to testify, and we strongly urge you to do so, you will be asked to state and spell your name, give your address. We will ask you if you are employed and by whom, and if you are a customer. If you are appearing on behalf of a group or organization, please state that. Don't be intimidated by the terms that I've used, such as testimony and cross-examination. We all recognize that you may not be lawyers, and we know that none of the parties here would try to embarrass you in any way. They may ask you questions about your testimony. You should not become upset by this questioning or feel that you are under personal attack. Such questioning is entirely normal for this type of legal proceeding. We ask simply that you listen to the questions asked of you and that you answer the questions to the best of your ability. If any questions are improper, we will let you know. The second method of participation is for you to make an off-the-record, unsworn, or unaffirmed statement. If you choose to do this, you will not be sworn in, and the court reporter will not record your remarks. We and the commission, as a matter of law, cannot consider evidence which is not part of the official record in this case. If you choose to make an off-the-record statement, you will be asked to state your name and address, that you are a customer, and if you are representing a group or organization. You will not be subject to cross-examination. We will assume that everyone who has signed up will make an on-the-record statement, so if you do not want to testify formally, please let me know when I call your name. If you do not wish to testify, you can always contact one of the active parties here, such as the company, INE, or OCA, to express your concerns directly to them. For the benefit of the court reporter, please speak slowly and clearly, and identify yourself when speaking. This public input hearing is your opportunity to present evidence regarding the proposed rate increase. If you have questions concerning the filings, we are sure the company representatives will do their best to answer them briefly. Please don't bring up billing disputes or any individual problems you may have that are not relevant to the scope of this proceeding. But as we indicated, feel free to directly contact any of the attorneys involved in this case after this hearing, so they can address your individual issues directly. We do want to remind everyone that this is an official legal proceeding. While we don't want you to feel intimidated or nervous about speaking publicly, please keep in mind that this is a serious and official hearing. Finally, we will not, at this point anyway, impose a time limit. However, we would ask each speaker to limit him or herself in order to ensure that we are able to get to everyone who signed up. If you agree with the prior speaker, just say so. There's no need to be repetitious. If we do impose a time limit, it will be strictly enforced. Before we begin hearing from you, which is why we're all here, we're gonna allow the party representatives present to make a very brief statement, beginning with PPL.
Thank you, Your Honor. Good evening, everyone. My name is Devin Ryan. I am one of the attorneys representing PPL Electric Utilities Corporation in this proceeding. Also here, appearing on behalf of the company, is Kimberly Clock, who is in-house counsel with the company, and I'm from the law firm Post &amp; Shell. PPL Electric believes that the proposed increase in electric distribution-based rate revenues should be approved. As explained in the company's direct testimony, PPL Electric continually strives to provide adequate, safe, reliable, and reasonable service to its 1.5 million customers while offering programs and resources to support those customers and saving energy and managing their bills. To that end, the company works diligently to be efficient in its capital investments and its incurrence of operation and maintenance expenses, recognizing the downstream impact that those costs will have on customers' rates, as well as the importance of those expenditures in maintaining and improving their electric service. This focus on efficiency and affordability has enabled the company to stay on a base rate filing for 10 years and has kept PPL Electric's distribution rates among some of the lowest in Pennsylvania. However, PPL Electric must increase its distribution rates to have an opportunity to continue providing safe and reliable electric service and earn a just and reasonable return on and of its investments. We do not have a formal presentation this evening, and PPL Electric will not be presenting testimony here today. The purpose of this hearing is to hear from comments, hear from customers, and members of the public about the company's proposal, and we appreciate everyone's participation in the public input hearing this evening. Although I have the right to object to your statements on certain grounds and cross-examine you here this evening, I do not expect to do so. This does not mean that the company necessarily agrees with your statements. We would reserve the right to respond to any statements made here tonight in the company's written rebuttal testimony that will be submitted later in this proceeding. I note, however, that the company does have customer service representatives available that would be able to assist anyone testifying here tonight with any customer assistance programs and to address any specific concerns you may have. So for those participants desiring to speak to a representative, I ask that you please provide your contact information, and we'll make sure that the appropriate person from the company contacts you to respond to and address your questions and concerns. Also, for any participants here tonight who have filed a complaint about the proposed base rate increase, PPL Electric may reach LTU specifically to discuss the issues you have raised therein. The company encourages everyone here to testify under oath, so that the commission has a full record in this proceeding. I want to thank you for participating tonight and look forward to hearing your testimony and comments.
Thank you. INE?
Thank you, Your Honor. Good evening, everyone. My name is Michael Podscotch, and I'm an attorney with the PUC's Bureau of Investigation and Enforcement, or INE. Our office is tasked with representing the public interest in rate cases before the commission. What that means is our job is to ensure that utilities charge rates that are just and reasonable and non-discriminatory and at a level that allows the utility to provide safe and reliable service to all customers. In cases such as this, myself and a team of attorneys, engineers, and financial analysts will review the utility's filing and responses to discovery questions in order to formulate an argument as to what we think is in the public interest in a given case. We work to balance the interest of the utility, its customers, and the regulated community as a whole. And an important part of this process is the public input hearings. So I want to thank you all for attending tonight, and I would also encourage you that if you do testify, to testify under oath, so your testimony becomes part of the record. Thank you.
Thank you. OCA?
Good evening. My name is Kristi Appleby, and I'm with the Pennsylvania Office of Consumer Advocate, or OCA. We are an independent state office under the Pennsylvania Attorney General's office. We represent the interests of utility consumers and matters before the Public Utility Commission. We are not a part of the PUC. The OCA filed a formal complaint against PPL's rate increase. The information that we got from customers, get from the customers at this public input hearing will help us to develop our case. On December 22, we will provide our written recommendations to the PUC explaining why we believe that the company's request is too high. We will recommend to the administrative law judges and to the PUC that the company's rates be set as low as reasonably possible. The purpose of tonight's hearing is to hear from members of the public, to hear your opinions and your concerns. I encourage everyone who is interested in this matter to testify under oath. I also encourage you to testify under oath, so that your testimony becomes a part of the record, and then we can rely on it in our arguments to the PUC. After you testify, I might ask you some questions or get more details. There is no wrong answer, and it's okay to say "I don't know." I will be here after the hearing to answer any questions. I also have put some materials on the table in the back of the room with tips for participating in this hearing. I thank you for coming out this evening, and I look forward to your comments.
Thank you. OSBA?
Thank you, Your Honor. Good evening, everyone. My name is Steve Gray. I'm the senior attorney at the Office of Small Business Advocate. The OSBA, like the OCA, is an independent office, not under the PUC. We represent small businesses across the Commonwealth, before the PUC, before Commonwealth courts, and some federal agencies. As Attorney Appleby just said, there's gonna be a lot of testimony filed on December 22. That will be the direct testimony of the non-company parties, and I'm just emphasizing that, as Your Honor has pointed out, there are quite a few parties involved in this case. If you are a small business representative, please testify on the record tonight. It helps our office prosecute this case and helps my expert witnesses with their direct testimony. Thank you for coming out. Thank you, Your Honors.
Thank you. EJA?
Thank you, Your Honor. Good evening. My name is Devin McDougall, and I'm an attorney with the nonprofit law firm Earth Justice, here tonight representing the Energy Justice Advocates, or EJA, a group including Clean Air Council, Vote Solar, Union of Concerned Scientists, Power Interfaith, and Physicians for Social Responsibility, Pennsylvania. EJA's technical expert is currently preparing testimony regarding PPL's proposals. But on preliminary review, EJA is concerned that approval of PPL's proposals may not be just and reasonable, including with regard to affordability and clean energy. Thank you all for coming tonight, and I look forward to hearing from you. I encourage you to testify on the record.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you, Your Honor. Good evening. My name is Joe Villo. I'm an attorney. I represent the Commission on Economic Opportunity, or CEO. CEO is a not-for-profit community action agency headquartered in Wilkes-Barre. We intervene in these cases to address not only the request for a rate increase, but to address universal service programs that PPNL is required to have to assist low-income ratepayers afford their rates. We will be addressing those universal service programs, as well as rate structure that discourages conservation. I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight and look forward to hearing your testimony.
Thank you. CAWSPA?
Thank you, Your Honor, and good evening. My name is John Sweet. I'm an attorney at the Pennsylvania Utility Law Project. In this proceeding, we represent the Coalition for Affordable Utility Services and Energy Efficiency in Pennsylvania, also known as CAWSPA. CAWSPA is an unincorporated association of low-income individuals that advocates on behalf of its members to ensure that consumers of limited economic means are able to connect to and maintain safe and affordable utility services in their homes. CAWSPA is generally opposed to PPL's rate increase, especially as so many are struggling to afford basic necessities. We are also opposed to PPL's proposals in this proceeding regarding data centers and other large-load customers, despite these customers driving higher energy costs across the Commonwealth. In this proceeding, we are investigating the impact of the proposed rate increase on low-income households, the adequacy of PPL's low-income assistance programs to ensure that all consumers can afford to maintain gas, electric service to their homes. We're also reviewing the reasonableness of PPL's policies and terms and conditions of service to ensure that they are just, equitable, and do not have a disproportionate or discriminatory impact on certain consumer groups. We have retained experts with decades of experience in utility regulation, rate design, and low-income utility program design, who will submit detailed written testimony in this proceeding. I encourage you to all testify on the record in this proceeding, so that your testimony can be considered in making a decision in this case. In providing your testimony, please be sure to share what this rate increase would mean to you, to your family, and to your community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Sometimes elected officials attend public input hearings to offer testimony on behalf of their constituents. Since these elected officials are very busy and offer testimony on behalf of a number of customers, we allow them to offer their testimony first, so that they may then leave and attend to their many other responsibilities. With that in mind, are there any elected officials present who intend to offer testimony on behalf of their constituents? Okay, I see three hands, but gentleman in the center, your hand went up first with the red tie. Your hand went up first. So if you want to come forward.
Thank you very much. I do. The name is Eddie Day Pashinsky. P is in Pittsburgh, A-S-H-I-N-S-K-I. State Representative, District 121, Wilkes-Barre, Pennsylvania. 259 East Northampton Street, Wilkes-Barre. Pennsylvania State. Yes. On my constituents, behalf of my constituents. Well, first of all, thank you very much for having us. Thanks to all of the groups that are here today that represent everything that we need in order to provide the energy to our customers. I'm looking for a couple words: balance, fair, and we use the term affordable. I think it's pretty obvious that most folks are looking at their paychecks, and they're trying to figure out how they're paying for their taxes, which we hear a lot about. They're trying to pay for their food, their house, their car, living expenses, their children, and so on and so forth. So my point here today is simply I'm looking for fairness. I'm looking for balance. I was quite astonished to find that there was a request for a 25% rate increase. There's no way on God's green earth that a 25% rate increase is a reasonable increase. Even if the PUC studies the issue and cuts it in half, which many times that has happened in the past, a 12.5% increase is not feasible. Most people that I have spoken to have no problem and understand that things increase in cost. 1% increase, 2% increase, 3% increase, 4% increase, maybe 5% increase. Beyond that, regular folks, they're not getting an increase in their salary at that amount, and there's no way they're getting an increase in their salary or their income at 10, 12, 15, 20%. So the reality is, what is a number that we can come up with? So the businesses, PPNL, PDA, Water, whoever, all our utilities, what do they need in order to maintain a quality business structure and provide the services necessary? Because I look at it as life and death. You don't have water? Phew. No, we need water to live. So what is a fair price for that? And I'm not here to tell you what that percentage is. Your numbers are gonna have to determine it. But as a representative, I'm looking for a fair price, so that your companies can still maintain a quality product, so that your companies can continue to also employ qualified people at an income where they can maintain their families, also at a price where your company can make the advancements necessary for future, because we face all different kinds of things. So for me, on behalf of my constituents, I'm looking for the word "fair." What is fair? And if we can demonstrate numbers to the public that this is the number you need to provide the quality utility for them, for their life, for their quality of life, we could then help support that. We use a couple terms: affordability, accessibility, and quality. Have you heard those terms before? Here's the problem. If it's not affordable, it's not accessible, so therefore the quality doesn't matter. Got it? And that's where we are right now. With all due respect, a 14% increase, there's no way regular people can afford that. So once again, on behalf of the constituents that I represent, I'm looking for fairness. I'm looking for an open, open-door policy. More than happy to meet with everyone, to discuss whatever needs to be done to try to help in this process, but I'm asking for that fairness, that balance, and again, something that is accessible, so that people can afford it. Thank you very much. Sure. Thank you. Thank you.
I did see two more hands go up, but I'm not much for the order, so who else is here on behalf?
It's State Representative Jim Haddock, H-A-D-D-O-C-K. 42 Center Street, Eustown, Pennsylvania, 18640. By the state of Pennsylvania, a state representative, the 118th District. I am. I'd like to say both. Good evening. My name's Jim Haddock, and I'm the state representative, as I said earlier, in the 118th District, serving Loser and Lackawanna Counties, which includes approximately 65,000 residents, and I'm also an individual ratepayer. And I'm respectfully asking the PUC to all righteject PPL's rate increase in front of us today. PPL's own notification on its literature lists the largest increase of 6.98% for residential. The commercial customers would be smaller at 5.32%, and then the industrial customers would see the smallest on their literature at 2.58%. But as the PUC knows, and a lot of our guests know, the literature that's sent by the company, the requester, is very limited. The actual filing is more than two pages of a couple of bulletin points. It's volumes, and within that volumes is the devil in the detail. And here are some of the points that I'd like to point out. Somebody mentioned earlier, data centers. There's a category called LP5 customers. Data centers fall into that group, and there's about 166 customers in which PPL currently serves in that category. They, in essence, are receiving a rate cut. It's just simply unbelievable. With the tremendous amount of growth in Pennsylvania and around the country in data centers, we need a firm commitment from PPL that does data centers pay their fair price, and they take the burden of their responsibility of the costs on to the data centers. We also need the PUC to require the data centers pay their fair cost, not the people. This must be done through regulation with the PUC. The LP5 must be scrutinized very heavy in this rate request. For the regular customers, 1.3 million customers of PPL, the rate request includes the flat rate the PPL charges every single customer for the privilege of having power into their house. Currently, that fee is $14.09 a month. In the rate request, that jumps to $17 per household. That is a 21% rate increase on the flat rate. The amazing thing is, the $14.09 that PPL currently charges the 1.3 million people in the state of Pennsylvania is already the highest in the state of Pennsylvania. To give you an example, Duquesne is in second place at $13 a month. Pecos charges $11.25, and they're the second highest in the state. It's amazing that that rate has gone up 21% in this rate increase. The 6.98% rate increase translates to 20% cost in the distribution costs for the average customer, to their bill. Again, we're in tough times. The state of Pennsylvania had 336,000 disconnects in the first nine months of 2025. That's a 16% increase over to 24 figure, uh, 2024 figures. So disconnects, people cannot pay for it, and this rate increase is, is pounding the, the residential people of Pennsylvania. This proposed rate increase would give PPL $356 million more in revenue. Of the $356 million per year, 254 million would be borne on the backs of residential customers. We talked about parity in the rate structure. This is top-heavy for the largest consumer number, which is the residential rate. Just as a side note, PPL as a company is having a pretty good year financially. In 2025, they raised their dividend, and they continued all four quarters, including the quarter that's just been announced. And it's been a modest two, two percent, uh, two cent increase, taking it from 25 cents per dividend per, per stockholder to 27 cents. So PPL's on pretty decent times financially themselves. Some of this cost is, is too costly for a company that's in great financial shape. I know in the pleadings, they talk about enhancements. But the enhancements are coming on the back of the customers, not of their stakeholders. Wall Street is being talked to and send a message to push the price of this stock up. You know, this rate increase is totally all aligned with the economic picture of Pennsylvania at the current time. It is unjustified because it predominantly rests on the back of those 1.3 million residential payers. It is not fair that residential payers and the small businesses are getting the second largest increase next to the residential, when the corporate payers are receiving the smallest increase and the data center class is actually receiving a reduction. I thank the court for the time in this matter, and I gladly accept any questions.
Any questions from PPL?
No, Your Honor.
Iain?
No, Your Honor.
OCA?
No, Your Honor. Thank you.
OSBA?
No, Your Honor. Thank you.
EJA?
No, Your Honor. Thank you.
CEO? And OSBA?
No, Your Honor.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony provided today will be the truth, the whole truth?
I do.
Thank you. Would you please state this while your name is pronounced?
State Representative Kyle Donahue, K-Y-L-E-D-O-N-A-H-U-E.
What's your address?
621 Gibbons Street, Scranton. Yes.
Are you a PPL employee or customer?
Yes. On behalf of my constituents. Thank you. Good evening, Your Honors. I'm State Representative Kyle Donahue, and I'm here to, here because what PPL is proposing is not just unreasonable, it's unacceptable, unethical, and fundamentally unfair to the people I have the honor of representing. Let's get right to the truth. This rate hike is an outrage, and the PUC should reject it outright. Just months after jacking up generation rates by 16%, PPL now wants another increase on the distribution side. Pennsylvanians haven't even caught in their breath. Families are rationing, skipping, cutting, paying the next, praying the next bill won't break them. And now PPL arrives at our door again, demanding more. Meanwhile, giant corporate users get a free ride. Let's be, let's be clear. PPL proposes no increase for its LP5 rate class, the class that includes data centers. So households, seniors, small businesses, and working families must foot the bill while massive energy-consuming corporate users, users are shielded. This is not equity. This is not fairness. This is deliberate, deliberate choice to place the burden on those least able to absorb it. And let's talk about something PPL does not want to discuss. Its inability or unwillingness to properly forecast load growth. For years, PPL and utilities across PJM have failed to properly forecast expected load growth. They failed to plan for the realities of a rapidly changing, growing grid. And now, instead of acknowledging their mistake, PPL wants customers, families, seniors, single parents, struggling households to pay for the consequence of its, of its own forecasting failures. When, when a utility misreads the future, that should not become a financial penalty for the people who have no choice but to buy its service. Forecasting load is a core responsibility of a regulated monopoly, not an optional task. And PPL's poor foresight is now being papered over with a rate increase targeting the most captive class of customers. PPL's justification also simply doesn't hold up. PPL says its operating and maintenance costs rose to 7.4% since 2015, well below inflation. If that's true, why do we need the giant rate hike now? Where did all the efficiency savings go? Why weren't grid investments planned and budgeted over the past decade? Grid maintenance and upgrades are not surprises. Asset aging is not a surprise. Load growth is certainly not a surprise, unless you refuse to see it. And the human cost is real, and PPL is ignoring it. Every extra dollar in an electric bill is a dollar taken from groceries, medicine, rent, childcare. There are people in my district already choosing between heat and food. People sitting in the cold because they're terrified of the, what the next bill will look like. Utilities love to talk about resiliency. But what, what about the resiliency of the people paying the bills? This rate hike is not reasonable, it's not justified, and it's certainly not fair. It is a direct result of PPL's poor planning, cushioned corporate treatment, and willingness to push the cost of its own forecasting failures, failures onto everyday people of Pennsylvania. I urge the commission to reject this rate increase, reject this inequity, reject the idea that residential rate payers should subsidize corporate mistakes and corporate customers. If PPL wants to build a stronger grid, it should start by building a stronger sense of responsibility. Thank you.
Any questions from PPL?
No, Your Honor. Thank you.
Iain?
No, Your Honor.
OCA?
No, Your Honor.
OSBA?
No, Your Honor.
EJA?
No, Your Honor.
CEO?
No, Your Honor.
OSBA? Thank you very much.
Thanks, Your Honors.
Do we have any other elected officials?
Good evening.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony provided today will be the truth, the whole truth? Thank you. Would you please state this while your name is pronounced?
Yep. Paige Cognetti, P-A-I-G-E-C-O-G-N-E-T-T-I.
What's your address?
1511 Euclid Avenue, Scranton.
Are you an employee or customer?
I am. The city of Scranton.
Right of the mayor's property?
Indeed.
Are you a PPL employee or customer?
I am.
And are you appearing on behalf of your neighbors or on behalf of your constituents?
My constituents.
And would you please tell us?
Thank you. Good evening, Your Honors. Thank you very much for coming to Scranton for this hearing. This is the fourth time in less than two years that I stand before the Public Utility Commission alongside the families, seniors, and small business owners who are doing everything they can to make ends meet while facing a cost of living crisis that grows more severe with every rate increase. And for the fourth time in less than two years, I'm asking you to hear the voices of the people who will be impacted by your decisions most directly, the hardworking people of Scranton. I stand here tonight on their behalf when I state for the record that I adamantly oppose this rate hike. The most important job of my role as mayor is the, the most important role of every elected official, and you just heard from three excellent ones, is to listen to the concerns of our constituents and advocate on their behalf. And what we're hearing is clear, consistent, and urgent. Families cannot absorb any more utility rate increases. The costs of electricity, gas, water, and sewer are climbing faster than the wages of the people who rely on these services. Across Scranton, seniors on fixed incomes are struggling to stay in their homes. Parents are making impossible choices between groceries, diapers, rent, prescriptions, and keeping the lights on. Low-income households in our city spend 6% to 10% of their income on energy alone. That means less food to cover a bill. It means skipping medication. It means choosing between safety and affordability in the coldest months of the year. These are not abstract statistics. These are our neighbors. They're the families that we talk with in our schools and at community events, the residents who are already overwhelmed by mounting prices. Folks like me who run through the house in the morning and again at night, turning down the heat and shutting off the light to keep the costs down in our own household. Households across Scranton and the region are already falling behind on the utility bills even before this new increase would take effect. Mounting utility debt is not a sign of irresponsibility. It's a sign that essential costs are outstripping what families can reasonably pay. Our residents are doing everything they can, and we need PPL to do the same. We understand the utilities must maintain infrastructure, improve reliability, and invest for the future. Those investments cannot come from the pockets of the most financially vulnerable people in their communities. Not when costs keep going up, not when wages, benefits, and fixed incomes have failed to keep up, not when families are in crisis, and not when we're already worried about data center speculators that are going to profit while we are left holding the bag. As mayor, I'm committed to pursuing every tool available to provide relief for the people of Scranton. That's why we filed a formal request to hold this hearing, and again, we're grateful for that. So the voices of our residents, not just filings and documents, are included in the process. We will continue to do the same thing if all of these utility rates keep coming forward. Our residents deserve stability. Our small businesses, our bigger businesses deserve stability and fairness. They deserve a utility company that recognizes their financial reality. I ask the commission to seriously consider the hardship facing our community and deny the proposed increase from PPL. Doing so will provide meaningful relief at a time when many households are already choosing between basic necessities. We appreciate the opportunity to speak and to hear all the voices of those that will come after me. We look forward to the commission and PPL with the people of the community to build a future together where families don't have to look at their electricity bill and weigh it against the other choices that they have to make. The rates are already too high, people are already worried, and we're already in a situation where our economic growth is in jeopardy. Thank you.
Thank you. Hold on. Any questions from PPL?
No, Your Honor. Thank you.
Iain?
No, Your Honor. Thank you.
OCA?
No, Your Honor. Thank you.
OSBA?
No, Your Honor. Thank you.
EJA?
No, Your Honor. Thank you.
CEO?
No, Your Honor.
OSBA?
No, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Any other elected officials? Okay, then we'll go to the list. Laura Doyle? Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony provided today will be the truth, the whole truth?
I do.
Would you please state this while your name is pronounced?
My name is Laura Doyle. That's D as in David, O-Y-L-E.
And your address?
511 Third Street, Dunmore, PA, 18512.
Are you an employee or customer?
Yes, by Harper Collins Publishers.
Are you a PPL employee or customer?
I am.
And are you appearing on behalf of yourself or on behalf of your neighbors?
Just myself. Uh, my name is Laura Doyle, and I'm a Dunmore resident and a new homeowner. It has been a struggle recently to keep my home in good repair, to pay rising food costs, and keep up with utilities. I value a community that cares that its residents can have their needs met, to have access to healthy food, clean water, and a safe, warm home. I don't want to have to choose between keeping the lights on or making sure I can afford food. No one should have to make that decision. Right now, I am concerned that the rising cost of electricity, I am concerned about what us homeowners will have to sacrifice. It is imperative to protect residents, family, and families from rising rates. The proposed rate hike will affect customers like me, who are already struggling to make ends meet, and others like me, and would have to pay more so that large tech companies can earn even more profit on the backs of hardworking homeowners. This rate change will most deeply impact low-income families in our community. The Utility Commission has the authority to protect and stand with their residential customers to ensure fair rates on our bills. I urge Utility Commission to reject this proposed rate change.
Any questions from PPL?
No, Your Honor. Thank you.
Iain?
No, Your Honor. Thank you.
OCA?
No, Your Honor. Thank you for that.
OSBA?
No question, Your Honor.
And EJA?
No, Your Honor. Thank you.
CEO?
No, Your Honor.
OSBA?
No, Your Honor.
Thank you very much for your listening. I apologize if I may state this name. Gerolyn Esposito?
Yes. Want me to talk into this, Wally? Okay.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony provided today will be the truth, the whole truth?
Yes.
Uh, would you please state this while your name is pronounced?
It's Gerolyn Esposito, and it's G-E-R-A-L-Y-N, Esposito, E-S-P-O-S-I-T-O. And I live at 108 Crystal Circle in Archbold, Pennsylvania. And if anyone doesn't know anything about Archbold, I will tell you. I have not, do not have a prepared statement, but we will become data center alley two. Okay. Sure. I'm sorry.
Are you an employee or customer?
No, I'm retired.
Are you a PPL employee or customer?
Yes, I am.
And are you appearing on behalf of yourself or on behalf of your neighbors?
Myself. Okay. So as I said, um, Archbold has two applications in and three other applications waiting. And our council just passed an amendment to, and our ordinance to put four more overlays in our, in our borough. And I'm here now, and even found out something more that I didn't know, is this LP5 that actually is insult to injury to me and residents that live in Archbold and everybody here in Lackawanna County and others, PPL, but the people in our valley will feel all the rate increases and will not get any benefits from these corporations in the data centers that are coming to our area. So you want us as rate payers and residents to bear the brunt of your putting data centers? And you're giving them a free ride? Like billionaires now, like they are not paying their fair share. So why don't you go to the data centers and ask them to give you the money you need to supply them with the energy they need? Now, years ago, and I don't know the year, they put in disgusting, rusted, ugly-looking transmission lines in Archbold. Okay? That was the beginning, apparently, of where our data centers were coming in. So that's why we have data centers, because the transmission lines are there for the data centers to come in. But then you don't ask them to pay their fair share? You want us? That is, like, unconscionable, is actually evil. Because if you have corporations that want to come in and will make profits on the backs of every resident in my town, how can you not ask them to pay for their fair share? So you're saying you need to make, make upgrades. But it's really suspect to me, and I think the people that live where I live, that you are asking for rate increases when you have all these data centers now coming into the Commonwealth and our political officials, they, both sides of the aisle, want data centers here because they are promising jobs, they're promising everything. But it remains to be seen what money will come to the communities that have to host them and why do we need to pay for these corporations to make all their money? And the poor people that will be living there and have to live and then pay for the increase? So I just think that now, all of a sudden, PP&L wants to have a rate increase when all these data centers are coming into our Commonwealth, especially within their little area. Okay, that's all I have to say.
Any questions from PPL?
No, Your Honor. Thank you.
Iain?
No, Your Honor. Thank you.
OCA?
No, Your Honor. Thank you. Thank you for having me.
OSBA?
Yes, Your Honor. Thank you. This is Esposito.
Yes.
Steve Gray from the Small Business Advocates Office.
Yes.
I just want to make sure I understand.
Okay.
You said you had two data centers and have been approved.
Okay, yes. In 2023, Archbold passed a zoning ordinance that really did not specify data centers, but said a place in data centers. So according to what I found out through all this, is within the state of Pennsylvania, you have to have somewhere within your town, if you're not regional, one place for like a data center, a landfill, whatever. So that opened the door for the data centers. So in 2020, so two are now going under the old ordinance, but we have four overlays at the request of landowners. Because our council is now Because our council is now backing us up. So at the request of the landowners, we have now four other areas that they can come into. One from the 2023 ordinance will be less than a quarter mile away from three schools, Vellavee Middle School, High School, intermediate. There will be like hundreds of feet, not even, from housing developments. So, okay, what were you going to ask? Sorry.
So you have two approved, you said you have three pending.
Well, they can now come in. What happened under, I think there's one going to be under Stay Back Park because it wasn't passed under the, it went under the old ordinance. So there's Project Boson, Project Gravity, and then there's another one that I'm not really sure that kind of got in there. But the overlays have, is considered residential, and the borough agreed for that to be. It's on the Scranton-Carbondale Highway. It is now considered residential and conservation. They want to take that residential conservation and put an overlay. And there is now, because they passed the ordinance.
Last question.
Go ahead.
So when you heard about, let's talk about the two that are approved.
Yeah.
Have you heard what company is coming in?
Oh, well, we had a planning meeting last Wednesday. And at the planning meeting, there was the engineer and the lawyer. And when the planning meeting, from this data center. So when the planning meeting, different members asked who they were, they had said, well, we have a few, but we can't, we don't really know. So whether they know or not, they are not saying. We are in the dark. So who knows?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, your honor.
EJA?
No, thank you. No, your honor, thank you.
CEO?
Okay.
OSBA? Thank you very much for your testimony. The next thing we have on the list is George Moran? Am I saying that correctly? Or Jordan? Did you sign up?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I just remembered.
Yes, sir. Yes, your honor.
You solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony provided today will be the truth, the whole truth, and only about the truth?
Yes, your honor. My name is Jordan Moran, J-O-R-D-A-N-M-O-R-A-N.
And your address, please?
423 Madison Avenue in German, Pennsylvania.
Are you employed or so by?
I am employed by pharmacan.
Are you a PPL electric customer?
By no choice of my own, I am.
And are you appearing on your own behalf or on behalf of a group?
On behalf of myself. Hello, everyone. My name is Jordan Moran, and I'm a 29-year-old lifelong resident of northeastern Pennsylvania. I'm the oldest of four children, born to an average middle-class family, similar to that of many others that are sharing their stories here today. And like so many here today, I come from a community of hard-working, family-focused folk who are here to say that we pay our fair share and that no more rate hikes should be presented. We are constantly told to budget better, spend less on luxuries, while these billion-dollar corporations see record profits year after year. I make about triple the Pennsylvania minimum wage. I work full-time. I'm a full-time student at Lackawanna College. And I freeze in my house still while my thermostat sits at 60 degrees and my PPL bill is still nearly 20% of my monthly income. Sorry, I lost my place there. I got a little heated. I eat ham sandwiches for lunch nearly every day. I make free coffee at work. We're all living on the edge already down here in the fading middle class. How much more blood do you want to squeeze from us? I don't even have kids, and I can't even think about starting a family, even though I'm nearly 30 years old in this economy. So my heart bleeds for those of you who are here today who somehow managed to provide for your families during these difficult times as well. So why is PPL trying to raise our rates while we are all struggling? It sure sounds like it's all to build up infrastructure for these data centers that want so desperately to take hold of our valley? And why should we foot the bill for their investment that they want to make? I mentioned before that I'm a full-time student. I'm a semester away from a degree in cybersecurity, so I may be one of the few that could actually benefit from these data centers opening in the area. And I'm here to say that we want to keep that crap out of NEPA. I would rather preserve my community than try to accept a six-figure job for some bullshit tech corporation that wants to come in here and destroy, I'm sorry, destroy the beauty of our natural valley and tear up our communities. We need to act now before these data centers become the new coal barons. We can't be the ones to foot the bill. The purpose of a utility company, as was said earlier by our representatives, is to provide a service, not to seek investment enrichment through the use of customer funds. Thank you very much.
Any questions?
Mr. Moran, would you like anybody from the company to reach out to see if you qualify?
I make too much to qualify for assistance, but not enough to stop struggling.
Thank you, sir. No further questions, your honor.
Hi, any?
Nothing, your honor, thank you.
OCA?
No, your honor, but thank you for coming out.
OSBA?
No questions, your honor, thank you.
EJA?
No, thank you, your honor.
CEO? OSBA? Thank you very much for your testimony. We're at the end of the list to sign us. Is there anyone who hasn't signed up that would like to offer testimony? You solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony provided today will be the truth, the whole truth, and only about the truth?
Yes, your honor.
Please state this way your name.
My name is George Gendry, G-E-O-R-G-E, last name J-E-N-D-R-E-Y.
What's your last name? I'm sorry?
Gendry, J-E-N-D-R-E-Y.
What's your address?
It's 211 Wyoming Ave, Dupont, PA, 18641.
Are you employed or so by?
USPS.
And are you a PPL electric customer?
I am.
And are you appearing on behalf of yourself or on behalf of a group?
Uh, myself. I will. Better.
That's better.
So I did a little research because I, like the one representative said, alls we had was like a little flyer insert in the bill about what was happening with the rate increase. One thing I stumbled across was a report from the center from rural Pennsylvania. They're saying there are population dependency growths. I believe it went out to 2050. But from what I'm seeing is the graph is almost going vertical. And what population dependency is, it's a comparison of how many workers compared to how many retirees. And right now, we're, have much more retirees than we have workers. Same problem with Social Security. You see it on the news every day, which is more financial stress on the labor of working-age residents. I also came across testimony before the PUC. It occurred April 24, 2025. It was by PPL. It was by a gentleman, Joseph Lookup. And I, that is his name because I did look it up. He is a VP responsible for transmission distribution. And he made the following points regarding data centers. He said it was going to provide job growth, economic development, bolster our nation's security, potential lower rates of all existing customers. I'll believe that when I see it. Enhance reliability, rate stability, and grow data centers in Pennsylvania, which it seems to be that's what we're all here about. Currently, he stated that there's requests in advanced stages in excess of nine gigawatts of new load requested from PPL. Across the state of PA, it's my understanding that there's actually, the data centers are looking for 12 gigawatt overall. PPL's current peak summer load is 7.5 gigawatts. That's their current load at their peak. Data center requests are poised to more than double PPL's electric system peak within the next five to six years. PPL Electric has invested in the reliability, resiliency, and transmission systems to better serve its customers. An additional benefit, as stated, to this investment is that PPL is now stands ready to serve this influx of load with large-load customers, data centers, only having to cover incremental costs of interconnecting these facilities. Another thing I came across related to PA jobs numbers. This is from, I believe, the PA Industry Employment Report. This is for a period, this is a projection from 2022 to 2032. And in regards to data industry jobs, they're looking at expanding across the two sectors in the data industry. 360 jobs per year. Over 10 years is 3,600 jobs. Overall, we're looking to go from 318,000 jobs, 120,000 to 320,000 jobs in 30, a net gain of 1,900 jobs. I submit, it can't be both. PPL cannot be taken seriously when they tell the PUC there is a potential to lower rates for all existing customers in April, then come back to the PUC a few months later and ask for a rate increase. Why should large-load customers only have to cover the incremental cost of interconnecting their facilities? Why not cover the total impact to the grid? PPL also talked about job growth. When the truth is long-term jobs in the data industry is 3,600 jobs to PA, which will give a net gain of jobs overall of 1,910 jobs. And this is over 10 years. This is a six-tenths of a percent job increase, which is essentially a flat job rate in the state of PA. Bottom line, don't let the PPL residential customers be roadkill on the race for AI. A flat job rate, higher utility rates is not what PA residents want or deserve. Thank you.
Any questions?
No, your honor, thank you, sir.
Hi, any?
No, your honor, thank you.
OCA?
No, your honor, thank you.
OSBA?
No questions, your honor, thank you.
EJA?
No, your honor, thank you.
CEO?
No, your honor.
CAOSBA?
No, your honor.
Thank you very much for your testimony.
Thank you, sir.
Is there anyone else who didn't sign up? You solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony provided today will be the truth, the whole truth, and only about the truth? Thank you. Should we state this way your name?
My name is Joseph Machiski, J-O-S-C-P-H-M-U-C-H-I-S-K-Y.
What is your address?
350 Kennedy Drive, Einem, Pennsylvania.
Are you employed or so by?
I am, Northeast Door Sales Company.
Are you a PPL electric customer?
I am.
And are you appearing on your own behalf or on behalf of a group?
Myself. Okay. So about a month ago, I received my PPL bill, which I pay my distribution rate. And then you're allowed to go out and look for other suppliers, which I had. I had a company called Energy Harbor. They're out of Texas, I believe. So I had done this once before, and I could not reapply online. So I called the company directly. When I did that, my current rate was like 12.45 cents per kilowatt hour. The new rate I found for 12 months was approximately the same. But what struck me funny was this gentleman on the other end of the line asking me or telling me that he believed I should be, which would be a smart move, to look at the three-year rate, which was at 16.45 cents, something like that. And I said to myself, why would I want to pay 25% more for three years? And he said, well, he says, you're in eastern Pennsylvania. He said, there are some things going on in that market that we know about. And he said, I would highly recommend that you take that rate versus the 12.45 cents per kilowatt hour for one year. And I thought that was really funny until, and I am in the Archbold data center problem, go to the meetings. But I didn't realize until he said that and coming to this meeting tonight, what do other people know in other places that we don't know here in northeast Pennsylvania? So he kind of opened my eyes to the fact of what other people here were saying. Other places in the country know about this? And he specifically said eastern Pennsylvania. He said, you live in eastern Pennsylvania? I said, yes. He said, you know, you may want to take that rate for three years. And I thought that was funny. I didn't do it, but now maybe I should have. So it's just, I think this is important to what we're looking at right now. If these people know these rate increases are coming, and are they already in there and we don't even know it? So I'm glad to see that the PUC is looking at this, and I would not recommend the PUC allow these rates to go through as they are structured right now. Yes.
Any questions?
Just one question, your honor. Do you remember the man's name?
No, I don't. Sorry.
Hi, any? OCA?
No, your honor, I don't have any questions, but I want to thank you for coming out.
I'm sorry?
I said, no, I don't have any questions, but I wanted to thank you for coming out.
OSBA?
Okay. One question. You didn't get the man's name. Did this person say who they were from?
They were from Energy Harbor. That's, I actually called them.
Okay. Do you have any friends in Boston?
No, I don't.
One of our expert witnesses in Lexington, and they're paying 30 cents a KWH. So, thank you. Thank you, your honor.
EJA?
No questions, your honor, thank you.
CEO? CAOSBA? Thank you very much for your testimony. Anyone else who didn't sign up that would like to testify? Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony provided today will be the truth, the whole truth, and only about the truth? Thank you.
Hello. My name is Lawrence Sale. I'm Z-A-L-E, and I'm at 15 Paul Street, Scott Township, Pennsylvania.
Are you employed or so by?
I'm sorry, what?
Are you employed or so by?
I'm self-employed. I have a law firm.
Are you a PPL electric customer? Are you a PPL electric customer?
No. I'm sorry. Yes, yes, I am.
And are you appearing on your own behalf or on behalf of a group?
What?
Are you appearing on your own behalf or on behalf of a group?
No.
You're not appearing on your own behalf? Or are you appearing on your own behalf?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. All right. First off, could we ask questions from people over here?
I'm sorry?
Could we ask questions?
We're not looking to incur dialogue. I really just want to hear what you have to say about the pending rate.
Okay, just the pending rate. All right.
If you have questions, I believe that the company does have staff here who may be able to answer your questions after the hearing.
Okay.
And you can always reach out to one of the parties here if you have questions to them directly.
Okay. Well, first off, usually a company asks for a rate increase when they're in debt. And we know that PPL is not in debt. Right now, they made, I think they grossed over 1.2 billion in income, and they had profits, I think in 2023 of 687 million, and 2024 even more than that. So they're not in debt. So that's number one. Number two, you'll say, well, what are the biggest expenses they have? Well, you got payroll, right? And then you also have energy. They make electricity. Well, we know that fuel prices are actually dropping at this point. And then, of course, we're sitting on all this cheap natural gas. So it's not going to go up in the future. It's going to go down. Okay? Third thing is employment. For employment, AI. With AI, many companies are cutting staff. Not going to increase, they're going to decrease. All right? So you put all these together, and you'll say, well, what is it? What do they need the money for? What's the big to-do now? Data centers. Who benefits from a data center? You've heard of them. Apple, IBM, right? Amazon, Microsoft. Are any of these companies hurting? No. There's seven of them. And I didn't even get into the AI. The seven of them are taking the Dow to record levels right now. Okay? Okay, they're flush with cash. They make a fortune on this, right? And you're asking these people to pay for them? Like, where's the logic in this? Do you really think these guys have the money? Or maybe Amazon, you think? Like, use some logic here. What is this for? This is stupid. Any questions?
Any questions from PPL?
No, Your Honor, thank you.
Hi, Amy? OCA?
No, Your Honor, thank you for having me.
OSBA?
No questions, Your Honor, thank you.
EJ?
No questions, Your Honor, thank you.
CEO?
No questions, Your Honor.
OSBA?
No, Your Honor, thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Anyone else who didn't sign up and want to offer something, a statement? Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony provided today will be the truth, the whole truth, and they both agree?
I do.
Thank you. Please state and swear your name and address.
Jeff Smith, J E F F S M I T H.
What's your address?
913 Church Street in Jessup, Pennsylvania.
Are you employed or so by whom?
Self-employed.
Are you a PPL electric customer?
Yes.
And are you appearing on your own behalf or on behalf of a group?
On my own behalf right now.
What would you like to tell us?
Well, I would like you to deny the rate increase. And a couple of the reasons, and I think they were hit earlier. But we look at the population of Pennsylvania, and we look at the population growth within the PPL jurisdiction. It's not growing dramatically. It's rather a flat line. So we know that the residential customers are not the demand at this point. We also look at the PJM grid itself. I believe Pennsylvania supplies 25% of the energy to that grid. So we're looking at 13 other states approximately and the District of Columbia. So we are the largest supplier of energy to this grid. So PPL is sitting on that hotspot. We're also sitting in a place, a location that has abundant natural resources that will drive the cost of that supply down. So I do not see a reasonable explanation why we would need to see a rate increase when the business model is actually benefiting PPL at this time, and it will throughout. The, you guys have, the PUC has done an excellent job over the years of keeping us right there at the average, maybe slightly above. A rate increase like this is going to drive us way above average as far as cost to the average rate payer. So once again, the ratepayers of Pennsylvania are going to be carrying the water and doing all of the the painful costs that is associated with this when we also give the abundance of energy to that grid. I live in a community that 10 years ago had a natural gas power plant placed in Jessup with the promise, the promise, we will lower your rates. That has not happened. We haven't seen it. But what we have seen is the infrastructure of facilities like that drive down property values. And when you drive those property values down, you're also driving down the tax revenue of the municipalities, of the school districts. I may be incorrect in this statement, but I do not believe, unlike other states in the nation, PPL has to pay any property tax on the grid system that they have in place, whether it be a substation or those ugly rusting wires. They are not taxable. Other counties, other states allow that to happen. So the residents not only are going to bear the rate increase, but inevitably, they're going to increase the tax burden. Municipalities will have to suffer these rate increases. School districts will, cities will. So this domino effect will have an extreme negative effect on the local economy because I do believe a dollar in somebody's wallet or in their pocket is going to get spent. So that's, to me, is economic development. So I would work at denying this, but I would also think that you should increase on the industrial users. If that is where the demand is coming from, there's nothing to say that you can't elevate that cost, correct? And keep the residential cost to a minimum. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions from PPL?
No questions, Your Honor, thank you.
Hi, Amy?
No, Your Honor, thank you.
OCA?
No questions, Your Honor, thank you for having me.
OSBA?
No questions, Your Honor.
EJ?
No questions, Your Honor, thank you.
CEO?
No questions, Your Honor, thank you.
OSBA?
No, Your Honor, thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Is there anyone else who hasn't signed up and wants to offer a testimony? Anyone else? Okay, that being said, we'd like to thank everyone for their attendance and participation in this evening's public hearing. And the hearing is adjourned. Have a good evening, everyone.